Our first speaker is Helen Lingard. And Helen is from the Royal Melbourne Institute of Technology, a university distinguished professor and director of the Centre for Construction Work Health and Safety Research. In 2009, Helen was awarded an inaugural Australian Research Council Future Fellowship to undertake a programme of research examining ways to integrate health and safety into the planning, design and delivery of construction projects. Helen works closely with government and industry partners and recently completed a five-year international benchmarking study of construction, work health and safety, in partnership with Virginia Tech USA. So please join me in welcoming Helen Lingard.
Thank you very much, Pam, and thank you very much to WorkSafe Tasmania and the Safety Institute of Australia for giving me the opportunity to talk to you today about some of my research. As Pam mentioned, I'm the director of a research centre at RMIT in Melbourne and our centre looks specifically at construction workers' health and safety. So I'd like to talk to you today about some of the work of our centre. But just a little bit of a background, our centre's been in existence since 2012 and since that time we've worked with a range of government, industry and international partners. So here are some of our current and recent partners. We work with Virginia Tech in the US, Loughborough University in the UK and a range of large clients and industry and government organisations. So I'd like to talk a little bit about improving construction workers' health and safety and in particular designers' work health and safety priority. The Australian Strategy for Work Health and Safety 2012 to 2022 talks about health and safety by design and it talks about the need or the benefits associated with eliminating hazards and minimising hazards by design. And it talks about eliminating and minimising hazards associated with structure, plant substances and those sorts of things. However, it also talks about hazard elimination and risk reduction in relation to work processes and systems of work. And my comment is that in the construction industry today, we put a lot of emphasis on the first of these. We look at the design of structures and the design of plant and we undertake chair reviews and safety and design reviews to think about those things during the design stage of projects. But what we do perhaps less well is think about the design of work itself and the design of the processes of work that are used in the construction industry. And it's the design of work and the design of work processes that I want to talk about a little bit today. Now, quite a number of years ago, I was awarded a small research grant to look at the issues of work hours, work-life balance and work and family relationships in the construction industry. And this is some of the data that we collected from some large construction companies in a national study. We asked people how many hours of work they typically worked each week and we found that workers on-site, in site-based roles, work obviously a lot more hours than people in corporate head offices of construction firms. And indeed, on-site workers, the manual, non-managerial workers, on average were working 63 hours a week. Many cases, they were actually working more than that. And even professional managerial workers in the site office locations were also working over an average of... The 45-hour red line here is what I think at that time the Relationship Forum of Australia, I think, I'd have to look that up. But they said this was actually the level at which you could have a normal and well-functioning family life. So we can see in the construction industry that people are working long hours and that those long hours are likely to be detrimental to their work-life balance and their family life. We then also measured a phenomenon called work-family conflict, work-to-family conflict. Now, this is the... It describes a phenomenon where because you're working so long or you're experiencing so much strain or stress at work, that you can't function adequately in your family life. And we looked at two different aspects of that, time-based, which is the black lines here, and strain-based. So time-based is where you simply have too much time at work, not enough time at home, and your family life suffers as a result. And strain-based is where, you know, you're stressed at work and you come home and you carry those moods and those stresses over into family life and they have a negative impact. Now, we used a standard method of measurement for this phenomenon in the construction industry here in Australia and we compared it with data that's been collected in other industries around the world. And you can see here that in the construction industry in Australia, both time-based and strain-based work interference with family, that's work damaging family life, is actually higher than in all these other groups of workers in the US and the Netherlands. And indeed, we looked at other groups of workers in other countries as well. Now, because this hasn't been measured in this way in other construction industries around the world, we can't necessarily compare it with other construction workers. But what we can say is that construction workers in Australia, as far as their work and family lives, they're doing it tough. And this is some of the data that proves it. Now, the reason that this is a concern is that all the literature all around the world, all the research evidence shows that work-family conflict, when people feel that their work is negatively impacting their family life, has very well-established and proven consequences for health. So it's linked statistically to things like increased stress and anxiety, to depression, lower job satisfaction, high cholesterol, heart disease, burnout, strained family relations, absenteeism and turnover, and poor diet, low levels of exercise and sleep problems, and other things as well. They're just some of the health implications that flow from this poor work-family interaction. So it's a bit of a problem. We then have done some more work looking at work-family balance, work hours and experiences over the life of projects. So we thought, well, you know, it's not just once in someone's life that they might experience this. We know that projects, construction projects are dynamic. Things change, there are unexpected events, things go wrong, there are pressure points. And over the life of projects, people are likely to experience different impacts. So here's some data that we collected on a large road infrastructure construction project in Melbourne. And we asked workers over a period of time, and we... I have to say, the people who filled this out were non-managerial manual workers as well as professionals and managerial workers. So we had a good spread of people in the field and people in the project office. And we asked them to fill out a short, really short survey, just five questions each week. And that question just basically asked them how many hours they'd spent at work each week, how satisfied they are with their work-life balance, how satisfied they were with their ability to complete tasks at home and their ability to complete tasks at work. And you can see that there were fluctuations over time. But what's actually really important here is at this point in time, from week 13 to week 17, we can see that work hours went up dramatically. So this solid black line is the, that people self-reported hours of work. And it went up quite dramatically. And at the same time, the mirror image of that is their satisfaction with their work-life balance, their ability to complete tasks at home particularly fell most of all. And it shows that as work hours went up, more harm was happening at home and people were feeling pressured. What was also intriguing about this particular project, and we collected data from a number of projects, so we've got similar data from other projects as well. But what was intriguing was that at this point in time, what led to this escalation in work hours was that at week 17, a major project milestone was due. There was a big chunk of the work was to be completed and there was going to be a big celebration. And I believe the media were involved and there was going to be some celebration of a major piece of the work being completed. So in fact, what you see here is prior to that, a big escalation in work hours, damage to people's work-family life, you know, and it was a problem. So we asked people to give us some comments. So in that survey, we just had a little box at the bottom and said, "Look, if there's anything else you want to tell us, please do." And what they were telling us was, "Around that time, as usual, I have too much to do. You know, I don't have enough hours in the week, time flies by. By the time you look up at the end of the day, you carry most of it forward to the next day. I came into work at 4am in the morning to try and get ahead." And that was a managerial worker on that project. And that's just not sustainable. We were saying, people were telling us I was sleep fatigued because there was an error one morning that carried over for a day or two. And what we're seeing here in this data, which is really, really worrying, is that there's this idea called the effort recovery theory, right? It basically says that if you expend a lot of effort, both physical and psychological, you spend a lot of energy to get a certain amount of work done. If you don't then have enough recovery before the next work experience, then you have to expend twice as much energy to get the same amount of work done. And if you don't have enough recovery between periods of work, then this is likely to be a downward spiral effect where you ultimately become very fatigued and it's just not a sustainable way of working. And we saw evidence of this in that project-based data and that I think is really quite alarming. So a conclusion that we drew from that is that the industry, the construction industry does in fact have some very sophisticated ways of planning and scheduling projects. You know, we use a lot of software to schedule things and make sure we've got the right resources and we know when major intense periods of work are going to take place. So is it possible, given that we also know that recovery is very, very important, to use the same sorts of tools to actually schedule in and design in recovery periods for people working in these high-intensity projects? Because, you know, again, if we're working people in a way that's not sustainable, maybe we need to start to think about redesigning work to make it more sustainable for the people who are working in these projects. So that's the first case study I wanted to share with you. And the second case study I'd like to share with you, I want to talk about three cases. I'm using three different cases which we've engaged in researching to actually show how I think the design of work could be better in various aspects. So the second case study I want to share with you is a case study related to health promotion in the construction industry. And a few years ago, we were fortunate enough to be awarded an 18-month piece of work funded by the Queensland Government, Department of Justice and Attorney General. And we did this work in partnership with Lend Lease, a large construction company. Now, the aims of this particular piece of work were to do what they called participatory action research. It basically means going out on-site, talking to people, listening to them, helping them to design some health promotion strategies and then watching as they implemented those health promotion strategies and seeing how effective they were and feeding that all back in a sort of continuous learning cycle. Now, the scope of this particular piece of work was to look at five different health behaviours that were of interest to the Queensland Government. They were smoking, poor nutrition, hazardous alcohol intake, physical inactivity and overweight obesity. So we collected a whole heap of data again using surveys and we used a measurement method which is also used by the Australian Bureau of Statistics. And we collected data from our construction industry sample across three sites in Queensland. We had quite large numbers of workers in those sites. And this is some of the data that we got. And we've actually plotted this data against the ABS data, the Australian Bureau of Statistics data. So you'll see, this is the data that we got from our Australian sample for the various age groups. And the numbers that are in bold are areas where our construction sample had poorer health than the Australian Bureau of Statistics data is for the Australian population at large. So we can see that, for example, vitality and social functioning, the two horizontal bars that I've ringed here, really workers in nearly all age groups had poor health relative to those two aspects of health compared to the ABS data for the male population at large. And indeed, the other thing that's interesting, and I don't know why this is the case because, you know, sometimes survey data tells us something but it doesn't tell us why it happens. So I'd be very interested in your thoughts around this because the other thing we saw in this data was that because the age 30 to 39 group really seemed to have relatively poor health across all of the categories of health that were looked at in this survey. So physical functioning, physical roles, bodily pain, general health, vitality, social functioning, emotional and mental health. So, you know, there's something perhaps going on between that 30 to 39-year age group in the construction industry workforce that warrants a little bit more thought and attention. So when we were working through this with our partner, they did a lot of really fantastic work and they decided they were going to implement a lot of health promotion programmes in these sites in Queensland. And they introduced smoking cessation campaigns that they made available to workers and indeed their partners and families. They ran health-based information sessions, healthy food tasting sessions. They changed the food options available in the site canteens to be healthy food options as opposed to traditional canteen food. They did healthy living presentations and gave people, you know, nutrition and healthy eating information. They provided fresh fruit pop-up stalls on-site at no charge to the workers. And they ran yoga and stretching classes and provided voucher incentives for healthy food options for people who attended those sessions. So they did things which, you know, were really, you know, different, I think, for construction site environments. These things are fairly unusual. But when we came to look at the data, this is just data that we collected in relation to food consumption and serves of fruit and vegetables eaten per day. You can see that over the life of this period of activity, it didn't really change a lot. It went up and down, but there was no sustained improvement. We didn't see people, you know, starting to eat more healthy foods and sustaining that improvement over time. And the same was true of physical exercise and the same was true of the other things that were targeted by these strategies. So look, as a researcher, that's always disappointing. You hope to see a real improvement and we saw no improvement. So we then went and talked to the workers and did some focus groups. So, "Look, you know, why, you know, didn't you want to have the food at the canteen? What was going on?" And what we found was that there were some structural and really significant barriers to good health that were actually really working against these approaches. So one of the big things was time and trade-offs. Again, going back to the long hours. The workers, and these are direct quotes, said, "You know, you get into a cycle, there's not enough time. It's hard to step back and make a change in your lifestyle. You get into a pattern of eating, smoking, drinking and sleeping. You wake up and do it all again. Before you know it, you've put on 20 kilos." And what they were telling us was it didn't really matter what things were given to them actually on the site. They were exhausted, they were working such long hours that they couldn't make really healthy changes to their lifestyle in that condition. Job insecurity and stress was a concern for some of the workers. And indeed, I think there were aspects of the masculine work culture that also were impediments to people's healthy behaviours. So, you know, "There's over 400 blokes here, call it pride. There's no way in hell you're going to get me involved with yoga." And I've deleted the expletives from that sentence because there was some colourful language. But, you know, they were telling us, "Look, this is not really the stuff that we want. You know, we need more time, we need some space to be healthy and giving us yoga on-site isn't really the answer to the problems that we face." So the conclusions that we came to from that particular piece of research was that we need to consider workers' health in the context of the organisation of work. We need to look at job quality, we need to look at a more holistic approach. We need to look at the work-family interactions and the relationships between work-family interactions and health. We need to look at job stress and its impacts on health and indeed the links between mental health and health-related behaviours. And this is consistent with thinking about broader health and try... You know, the understanding that if you simply try and change behaviour without also looking at the way that work is organised, then you're probably going to produce some fairly limited or short-lived improvements. And while I started by saying it was somewhat of a negative research finding to come to, I think it was a very important research finding. And indeed, our industry partner has really taken this on board and has decided that they're going to try and transition from one-off health and wellbeing interventions to more holistic programmes over time. And indeed, they've been doing so in parts of their business in the Services and Roads Division where they've introduced a 12-month calendar of health promotion programmes and delivered that consistently. And they've actually looked at more holistic things including financial literacy, physiotherapy, mental health, how to break bad habits and other things as well. So I think while the findings were disappointing, they were really important and they've produced some really interesting new learnings. Now, the third case study that I'd like to share with you again comes from some work that we did recently, which looks at engaging workers in the design of work. And what we see in many organisations, not just in construction, is that health and safety management systems are implemented with a top-down culture of enforcement. So we, you know, we develop a lot of documentation, we develop a lot of procedures, a lot of policies and we tell people to work to these rules. And what we don't fully understand sometimes is that sometimes workers' knowledge, tacit health and safety knowledge, are things that they know because they've done the job for many, many years, are not well included in those policies and procedures. So sometimes it's evident that there are some gaps between the way that work is written in a procedure and then how it's actually practised on-site. We were quite interested in understanding those gaps and we wanted to look at, you know, how those gaps work, why those gaps existed and how they could be filled and how we could better use workers' knowledge about work to actually design procedures that were more likely to be effective. So we used a technique called participatory video. And I think this is a really exciting technique because what participatory video is... What participatory video is... Sorry, I'll go back in. What participatory video is, is instead of making films about workers, it's actually getting people, workers themselves, to make films about the way that they work. So we worked with a small company in Melbourne, Code Safe Solutions. They're a small media safety organisation and they do this participatory video work. They go to work with groups and they get workers themselves to develop storyboards and scripts and act out visual work procedures. And then this knowledge gets captured and it gets used and made available to other workers via QR codes, quick response codes, those funny little pixelated things and mobile phones. So workers can access this information anywhere they want from their mobile phone. So when we started to look at this work, we went out on-site and we did some work observing this participatory video in process. And you can see here, this is what it looked like on-site. So the facilitator is here and the workers who were making the film are all around him. And indeed, what we wanted to do was look at how we could better understand work from the perspective of the people who were doing it. So as I said, unlike documentaries in which the subjects don't really have a say in shaping the content, content rather, of the films, participatory video gets people to shape the issues according to what they think is important, in this case, the workers. And it's been generally used to provide information and insight into the realities of marginalised and disadvantaged communities in society. So we thought, "Well, look, there's got to be an opportunity to use this approach to engage workers in a discussion about health and safety and the design of work." So here's one of the pieces of work, one of the examples that we came across. We followed a group of insulation installation workers and we observed them doing this participatory video. And here's an example of one of the gaps that we found. So the standard operating procedure for putting insulation in a ceiling space in a residential house required that a straight ladder be placed at a 1 to 4 ratio and extend 900 mils above the step-off point. And when they came to actually film this on-site to make this video, the health and safety manager was out on-site and she said, "Look, shooting it and viewing it through the camera's eye, we had to stop. The camera just doesn't lie. You simply can't place a straight ladder at that ratio and get a body in because it blocks off the access, you have to contort yourself round." And look, this was a clear gap between the procedure and indeed the practice. And it turned out that, you know, the standard operating procedure was simply practically impossible to follow in this particular context. So it was a really interesting example because having come to this understanding through making this video, they're now looking at new ways and new access systems to actually overcome this. But this had been the way that these guys had done this work for a very, very long time. And it was only when they were sort of starting to make a film about it that it became obvious. And as the facilitator in this particular programme said to me, he said, "Well, you know, you can hide a gap between policy and practice in a document when you're making a film and it's this visual and this obvious, you can't hide the gaps." So it made this gap very evident to the health and safety manager who became very aware of the need to have to deal with it. Another example that came up during the filming of this was an example where a scaffold erection process, which had been implemented for many, many years, here it is. You know, it was observed that when they were making the film, hang on, there's somebody working there with an unprotected edge. And so during the course of that, and I've got a quote, "There was just one phase for 30 seconds they were unprotected." So I said, this is the safety manager, "There's got to be something we can do differently." So we went back out to the work site with the crew, the supplier, and he showed the crew the issues and said, "How do you reckon we fix it?" They spent several hours trying to find a new erection process and they ended up coming up with an alternative where they used temporary mid-platforms and horizontal members to provide some protection. So again, this was something that became evident during the making of the film and they went away and they thought they would try and find a solution to it and they sort of came up with this. So the workers we interviewed, who'd been involved in this particular activity, said, "Look, it was really good, it was actually really good because I got my voice heard and people were sitting there and actually taking in what I said rather than just going over someone's head or turning a blind eye to it. It feels like something of progress can be made because people actually listened. It's good to give people your input, especially when you realise it's going to improve something. I think it's the best way because if the material, the films, the videos that were made are from the people working on the site, it's going to be spot-on. It's exactly what's going to be happening." And I don't think what this participatory video process did was really anything particularly innovative in the sense that, you know, it used technology that's already available and widely used. But it used it in a different way and it used it to elicit or start a really good conversation about, "Is there a better way of doing this? How can we plug that gap between policy and practice, procedure and practice?" Now, the last piece of work I'll just share with you and then I'll finish up because I realise, you know, I've probably spoken for a long period of time. But we did this work recently with Virginia Tech funded by the National Institute of Occupational Safety and Health. And we as RMIT were working as subcontractors to Virginia Tech in the delivery of this five-year piece of work. What we did was we were examining the relationship between project communication, the communication particularly between designers and constructors during planning and design stages of a construction project and the quality of health and safety risk control outcomes. So we collected data from 23 projects, 10 in Australia and 13 in the US. And we undertook 288 interviews during the course of this research. And we interviewed everybody from engineers, architects, suppliers of plant, constructors, specialists, subcontractors, you name it, anybody we thought we could talk to who would share some useful information we tried to speak to. And one of the things that we did was we tried to look at the timing at which risk control decisions were made and the quality of the risk control outcome. And we measured the risk control outcome using the hierarchy of control, which you're probably all very familiar with. But basically, if something, if a hazard was identified and eliminated, we scored it as a five. If we chose a risk, if they chose a risk control solution that was a substitution control, we scored it a four. If they chose an engineering solution, a three. Administrative controls were two and PPE was a one. So we actually tried to calculate, if you like, using the hierarchy of control, a quality of risk control measure for each of our projects. And what we found here is that the percentage of risks that were controlled before construction work began, that is, a hazard was identified and a decision was made before anybody started construction work, the percentage of risk controls in the pre-construction stage was associated with higher hierarchy of control scores. So the more risks that were identified or hazards that were identified and risk control decisions that were made before construction work commenced, the higher you were likely to get a more technology-based control. And that was good because it just gave us some evidence to say, "Think about health and safety early, don't wait till construction work's commenced. Get in the design and the planning stages because it does seem to make a difference." The other thing that we did that was actually, I think, really important to, again, what I think was a really important finding was that we calculated these social network diagrams for all of our projects. And what these social network diagrams show is all the different people we interviewed. So in this case, it was a rail project. We've got a rail authority, the client, the client's engineer, the rail operator, the architect, the constructor, the constructor's engineer and a pre-cast supplier. And the lines show how they were communicating with one another before construction work commenced. So this was during the design stage. And what we looked at was the thickness of the line shows the, like, the frequency of the communication. So the thicker the line, the more communication. And the position of the person in the network shows how central they were to decisions that were being made. And the position of the person in the network shows how central they were to decisions that were being made. And what we found, which I think across all of our cases, and we looked at these both in the US and in Australia, we found that where the construction contractor's position in the decision network was high, you got higher risk control outcomes. So for high quality, what we did was we divided all our cases up into those that provided high risk control outcomes, where elimination, substitution and engineering were predominant solutions and the ones that got low outcomes, where there was a much greater reliance on administration and PPE. And we found that for the cases where there was high-quality risk control outcomes, the construction contractor's centrality position in the network was much, much higher. And this provides, I think, really important evidence to suggest that you need to have people in the design-stage decision-making who understand construction, who understand the processes of construction and understand the materials and the methods and the technologies associated with construction. Because if you don't have people who understand construction centrally placed in these decision networks, then you're likely to get much lower hierarchy of control outcomes. So I think it's really important evidence as we think about how we do safety and design. And just as a little bit of a sort of a spin-off to this, we decided that our hierarchy of control measure could in fact be a really useful lead indicator for safety and design. Because, you know, we do a lot of safety and design activity, but how do we measure its effectiveness? How do we know whether a safety and design review has been a good one or a less good one? And we thought that, you know, we've done this hierarchy of control measurement for our research purposes. Why couldn't it be used as a lead indicator for safety and design in the construction industry? And so here's an example, for example, of one of our case studies where there was an original design of a, I think it was a mausoleum and they were building a basement to this particular structure. And the original design had a very high reliance on administrative controls. And when the construction contractor got involved in this particular project, it was a design and construct job, the contractor came up with a revised design for this particular basement and the revised design, you can see here, has much higher reliance on, a lot of the hazards were actually eliminated altogether. You see five of the things that they had to deal with actually got eliminated. One was substituted and there was a relatively low level of emphasis on the lower levels of control. So the hierarchy of control score for the original design was two-point-one-three. For the revised design was four-point-two-five. It was a lot higher. And if you use this type of profiling to evaluate safety and design outcomes, you can very quickly see whether you've got a good solution or a less good solution and you can compare between two alternative designs. So just like to acknowledge the funding agencies for those particular pieces of work. The first piece of work was funded by the Queensland Government under the Workplace for Wellness Programme and the second piece of work was funded by the Victorian Department of Business and Innovation. And then the last piece was funded by the National Institute of Occupational Safety and Health and done in partnership with Virginia Tech. Thank you. Shall I stay here?
Well, thank you very much, Helen. Very interesting case studies. Do we have any questions for Helen at all? No questions? Not one? Oh, yes. And another question, yeah?
I just asked a question about the health and age data that you put up and it was the role physical and the role emotional. The word role, was that produced?
Yeah, there are two components of the SF36, which is the instrument that we use. I can't remember off the top of my head which questions related to those two components. But one relates to sort of psychological and emotional wellbeing and I can find the questions for you and let you know which questions actually fed into each of those components. The role physical, I think, is related to physical ability, workability, basically, ability to actually undertake, oh, sorry, ability to undertake work tasks in a physical sense. I think role emotional, role physical is actually more about whether you're actually able to undertake your role as opposed to just your broader physical wellbeing. But the questions are, because it's a sort of a standard instrument and the questions are sort of feed into them, there are definitions of each of those components, but they do seem to have some overlap between them, definitely. Yeah.
Was there any research done on the pay comparison between the higher-echelon workers, workers in other fields, I mean, like in office workers and workers on construction work who seem to be working nearly twice as long as everyone else? Is that a result of their poor pay? That they have to work those hours? And as a result, all these other problems are falling into line, problems with their family? And I've worked on construction sites where the actual construction workers are working those long hours, working Saturdays and there's been problems with their family, obviously, because they're always at work. Now, the reason they're at work is to try and provide for their wife and kids and especially on the mainland states where housing is dearer, travelling is longer. And they have to do that because they're so poorly paid in relation to white-collar workers. Shouldn't you really look at putting their wages up to a level where they can actually survive at forty hours a week or whatever it is now at forty-six-point-seven or whatever that happens to be, a forty-eight or forty-seven-point-six? Did you do any research on that, Helen?
Not directly, but it came up in a lot of our interview data. And so we have actually done a lot of interviewing of workers over many years. The stuff I presented is work we've done, but part of a ten-year programme of work. And we've actually done some systems dynamics modelling to try and look at the interrelationships between family, financial issues, hours of work, work conditions, ability to work as people age. And what's really interesting is I think you're right. I think you raise a really important structural challenge for the industry, which is that these workers, and what was really interesting as well is most of the workers that we've looked at, unlike many other occupational groups in Australia, they tend to have stay-at-home partners. Their domestic partners don't tend to work or if they do work, they work part-time. So they are the primary breadwinners often and they're often predominantly male primary breadwinners. And what you find is, or what we've seen in the research, is that they work very, very long hours to provide a certain level of income, a financial support for their families. And then because they're not there and they don't see their families, the families break down. And they lose, if you like, for want of a better word, the social capital that they might have in those families. And ultimately, when those families break down, we've interviewed people who have said to us, literally, I am now, you know, in my fifties, sixties, I don't, my wife has left me, I don't see my children, they're grown up. I just work now this number of hours because I have nothing else in my life to do. And that is just really tragic. And I think there is, in fact, this really damaging dynamic that potentially can really play out to be very, very harmful for the workers. And I think, you know, it really does come down to fundamental sort of structural issues around around pay and around how workers work and become dependent on working long hours in order to maintain a certain level of income.
That's correct. You're not very old, but I'm a little bit older probably. In fact, I might even be the oldest in the room. But years ago, blue-collar workers, their wives could stay home because they were getting reasonable pay in respect to white-collar workers. Now it's the reverse. In fact, I think the government has advertised that people that go to universities get at least seventy thousand dollars more than a normal worker on a normal wage, which would include tradesmen. Now, the thing is, we need the unions to get more pay for the working class and the lowest-paid workers are the metalworkers. Every time they make a wage application, the government puts in a thing and tries to reduce it. So if they get four dollars a week or sixteen dollars a week, by the time they get the tax out of that, they get very little out of it. So they're always behind. Now, I suggest that the best way to fix this up is to give them parity in pay with the white-collar workers. I mean, they work very hard. Another thing the government wants to do, I believe, is to continue to increase the age of retirement. Now, that might be all right if you're sitting at a desk on a computer, but it's certainly very, very difficult and it gets harder in the building industry as you reach seventy and onward. So I think these issues need to be looked at. And if you get a chance, I'd like to hear some, you know, return in a future seminar where you've actually looked right into that. Some of these safety issues too. I noticed the bloke was getting up the ladder the wrong way in relation to the manhole and we don't know what was down the bottom, whether it was an obstruction there. Well, the hall only went one way. But maybe the manhole could be turned around even, so he could get through it or even enlarge. But, yeah, thank you for your seminar. It was in...
Going back to the issue of the retirement age, we do know from the European data, two-thirds of construction workers in Europe can't work to the retirement age of sixty-five. That's data from Germany. You know, it's a real problem and I understand exactly what you're saying. I really do think it's a really big problem that warrants much, much more close research and attention to understand.
I don't want to hog this microphone, but while I have, while I have it, maybe, maybe you can look at other aspects too. That the retirement age for women, because they sung out about not getting the same rights as blokes. And I thought when they did that, they're going to put the retirement age up to sixty-five, the same as the blokes, not take the blokes down to sixty. Now, there's a lot of young people lying in bed well into the afternoon and going out to the pubs and so forth. I suggest it wouldn't cost any more to bring that retiring age back again. Let the old blokes and old women retire, get the young ones out in the workforce. And I'm sure on a voluntary basis, you talk about mentoring, some of these old chaps and old women that have had a lot of life experience in those particular fields would voluntarily give a couple of days a week to some of those young gentlemen and young ladies in their particular employ but retire themselves out of the workforce so that that could happen.
Yeah, I think we do need to rethink and think about the structures of work, definitely, and find some, you know, some solutions to these problems without a doubt. Thanks.
Thank you.
Sorry.